Good evening, it is 5:30. If you would take a seat and then we will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where innovation underlined and visible with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the robe?
With pleasure. Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Alderman Simpson.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Lusko.
Here.
Alderman Kahnman.
Here.
Alderman Jobb.
Here.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderman Tylin.
Present.
Alderman Dove.
Here.
Alderman McDonough.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Here. Before we get into the agenda, we've got a few things we are going to do. First, on behalf of the members of the City Council as well as myself, I have a proclamation that I would like to read that reads, "Whereas the Mayor and City Council of the City of Springfield, Illinois hereby officially recognize and express our gratitude to Cecilia K. Tomalte for her service to the people of the City of Springfield, and whereas Tomalte has honorably served as the City Clerk for the City of Springfield from 2003 to 2015, where she worked to expand the services of the city's clerk's office and led the way in openness and transparency at Springfield City Hall. She achieved certification of Certified Municipal Clerk and served as President of the Municipal Clerks of Illinois from 2007 to 2008. Whereas Tomalte has admirably served citizens of Springfield's 5th Ward from 1999 to 2003 as their Alderman, sponsoring and passing the vacant and abandoned building ordinance, the chronic nuisance ordinance, and working to expand the city's anti-discrimination ordinance to include sexual orientation. And whereas the city looks forward to Tomalte continuing to be an active and important member of our community through her various charitable and service-oriented activities, we commend Tomalte on her dedication to the Springfield Area St. Jude's Run, serving as its fundraising chair, and her work with Peacekeepers Incorporated, which raises money for the Illinois Military Families Relief Fund. We thank her for her past work as a director and member of the Board of the World War II Illinois Veterans Memorial at Oak Ridge Cemetery. And whereas Cecilia K. Tomalte is all of the best as she and we wishes her all the best as she enjoys spending more time with her husband David and her family and many friends, now therefore I, J. Michael Houston, Mayor of the City of Springfield, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May 5th, 2015 to be Cecilia Tomalte Day in celebration of outstanding achievement."
Well, as my dad used to say, I look pretty good on paper. Thank you, Mayor Houston, and the council members who are here and who are no longer here, and to the new council members coming on, I really sincerely appreciate this proclamation. Sorry, I might get a little choked up here. I'm really very proud of all the accomplishments that have come to fruition in this room and in my office over the last 12 years. It's not always been easy, but it has been very successful, and that is due in large, large part to a wonderful staff. And I cannot go further without recognizing them because they are all here this evening. I don't know if we have all ever been in this room together. So first of all, I'd like to recognize Dottie Washington. She is what I affectionately refer to as the -- I affectionately refer to Dottie as the Vital Records Goddess for the City of Springfield because she knows it all backwards and forwards. Janet Cooper up here behind the wall up there, she's running the voting machine and the new voting system that has been in place now for a number of years, along with all of these wonderful monitors, and now you can all watch at home. I know you're just dying to do that. Up in front here is Rex Range, and he is the records manager for the City of Springfield, and he keeps things rolling right along and organized, and I am very grateful to all three of them for their hard work. They have been with me since the first day I came into office. The other individual I'd like to recognize is my deputy clerk, Riann Hawkins. Riann has been an absolute gift to this office. She is not only intelligent, but she has got great ideas, and I know she's going places. Riann, I am forever grateful to you, and you have my respect and admiration, and I wish you very well. Tomorrow, not only am I leaving, but Riann will be leaving City Hall on Thursday afternoon as well, so congratulations, Riann. I'd also like to recognize a number of people who are probably not here, but without them, all of these changes that have taken place with me and my office are the members of the ISD staff. And I'd like to specifically recognize Patrick Suva, Tim Moore, Joe Sernich, Tyler Tenerelli, Sean Webb, Jay Underfinger, and yes, even Jamie Sullivan, for his work on all of the projects that have come about because of my persistence, I guess. I don't like taking no for an answer. I know we can do it, and we're gonna do it, so. A couple of other people that I cannot express my thanks to enough are my dear friend Kathy Saltmarsh and Neil Calderon, who have been behind me in all of my campaigns, and I couldn't have done it without them. I want to also publicly thank one particular group of individuals who have supported me continuously and very generously over these last 16 years. IAFF Local 37, the Executive Board, and the membership have always been there for me and supported me in every election, and for that I am forever grateful. To my friends who have been with me all the way, every step of the way, through walking precincts and stuffing envelopes and writing checks at fundraisers, and even the parades that I know we all love, Rex, I am forever grateful to all of you as well. And last but certainly not least is my family, who I am happy to say they're all here tonight. It'll probably be the last time they ever come back to this room, so thank you, thank you. As most of you behind me know, when you run for public office, so does your family. So I could not have done any of this without you. I'm especially grateful to my children, who have always been there for me and helped me and supported me and loved me, and to my husband David, who is my biggest supporter, the best sign guy ever, and the best friend I could ever have. Thank you all very much, and thank you to the citizens of this community who have trusted me so many times and put their faith in me and voted for me. I owe you a debt of gratitude I can never repay. You have given me a wonderful career that I have thoroughly enjoyed and loved, and I will miss most of you. See, I got so excited about that proclamation, I forgot something. And I'm sorry to go out of order, but it's my right tonight. So I'd like to introduce Mr. John Clem, who has a special presentation for Mayor Houston.
Do you figure that you've given away a few keys to the city? So we went all out for it. Presented to Mayor J. Michael Houston in grateful appreciation for your dedicated service and commitment to the City of Springfield. This key represents our gratitude for the leadership and positive impact you have contributed to the community during your three terms served as mayor from 1979 to 1987, and from 2011 to 2015. We recognize your exceptional work, especially in the areas of public works, policy change, community safety, and financial restoration. Your legacy will continue to be a part of Springfield for many years. Congratulations on a job well done.
Well, that'd be the only key that we bought in the last four years, because we didn't have any money in the budget, so we didn't buy him. I would like to now present some plaques to some people that are leaving the City Council. First, to our newly-elected mayor, Mayor Lachlan Felder, if you'd come forward. Mayor Lach has spent the last 12 years as the City Treasurer, and he has big shoes to fill, and I'm not talking about my shoes, I'm talking about his father's shoes. And I'm sure that he is going to do that. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Cecilia, would you like to?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it very much.
12 years as City Clerk and eight years as Alderman.
No, four.
Four.
I'll take that. I know, sure would. Thank you.
To our Ward One Alderman. You know, Frank has spent 12 years on the City Council. He has spent a career in city government, not only as a firefighter and a fire chief, but, you know, four years ago, he stepped in at a very difficult time, and he will never be able to repay that. These are the clip notes, I hope everybody's comfortable. And Norman, I got this one. Jeanette sent out a little thing, I just want to tell us real quick. She didn't have a clock on, does she good?
I can put it on.
No. Jeanette sent out a little thing to all of us about turning all our stuff in, and your key to the garage, your binders, your whatever. And the last thing was turn in your ID. They're very efficient with those things. They turned mine off a month ago. I tried to get in certain parts of the building, couldn't get in. But before I go, and this will be the last time I'm in this building as elected official after 30-some years of being in city government, I'd like to take the time to publicly thank some people tonight who pushed me further along in life than I ever thought was possible. First, my family, my wife, Cinda, my son Alex, who have supported me through all the meetings, the phone calls, and especially all the news accounts. We laugh, but I've always thought the news media, talk show hosts of the community have been very fair with me. To Joe Davis, to Jeanette Bland, a special shout-out for all you've done for me, and really for all of us. To all my colleagues, both on this council and past councils, thanks for making it look harder than it actually was. No, I've really enjoyed your friendship, and I've enjoyed working with all of you. To all the city employees of this great city, to which I've had the honor of working with over the years, even in the face of tough decisions, I will always remember your professionalism, your dedication, and your can-do spirit. And to the public, it really has been an honor and a privilege to have served and represented you. Your kindness and generosity toward me and my family will always be remembered. And to our newly-elected officials, I want you to know that I'm one citizen who will be rooting for your success, all of you. So in closing, thanks to Springfield, it's been an unbelievable ride. Thank you. Now Alderman Simpson's almost rushing down here like anxious to do this, but Alderman Simpson has done an outstanding job. She has worked very, very hard for her ward as well as the entire city, and we thank you for your service. Eight years, long time, lot of time.
I said I wasn't gonna cry, because city officials don't cry, right? There've been some bittersweet situations since I've been Alderman eight years. My mother's death, the death of our beloved Mayor Dablin, breast cancer, but through it all, God has truly blessed me. He's allowed me to do what many people don't get an opportunity to do, to serve. I will miss working in the community. I want to thank all of my constituents who are voting for me twice, and for those who didn't, thank you too. I want to thank this City Council. I've had some bouts with many of you, but they were done in love. Jeanette, you guys take good care of her because she'll take good care of you. She's priceless, and without her, a lot could not have been accomplished. Mayor Houston, you've done a yelminstah under difficult circumstances, and I think I dodged a bullet, so I'm grateful for that. I couldn't have done it without the support, again, families. My daughter, who was usually with me every meeting when she was in town, she was sitting right there cheering me on, looking at me, shaking her head, "No, you shouldn't say that." So I'm grateful for her. My nephew is here in her stead. I'm very appreciative of him, and I'm rambling, so I'm gonna sit down. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Of course you would come out for a prank.
Can I do a speech too?
To Alderman Lusko, who has served for the last eight years, but more importantly is going to be the new City Clerk, congratulations, and I thank you for the job you've done to keep the City of Springfield in your power.
Thank you very much. I'd first like to start out and thank my family for always supporting me and being there to help me in whatever I decided I wanted to do, run for Alderman, run for City Clerk. Secondly, I'd like to thank all the staff and employees of the city. You guys are great. All it took was a phone call, and everybody was jumping as quickly as they could to get the job done and to try to help the constituents that are out there. And that's really a great thing, I appreciate that. Council members, thank you so much. You've made every council meeting an adventure, and I've enjoyed it. And I think everybody has their heart in the right place to do the right thing. I think we're very blessed and very lucky. Mayor, it was great to serve with you, I certainly appreciate it. And to Mayor Dablin, it was great to serve with him also. And last but not least, the citizens of Springfield, thank you, thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart. For the eight years as Alderman, and for now the newly-elected position as City Clerk, I'm looking forward to serving you, and I will give you 110 percent. So God bless you, and thank you.
Next, we have Alderman Kahnman. Sam has represented the 5th Ward for the last eight years. It has been an area that has seen a lot of progress, and he has done a great job in terms of representing those constituents as well as the people of the City of Springfield.
Well, Mayor, thank you, and it's been my honor and a privilege, really, to serve the people of Ward, the good people of Ward 5 and all the people of our city. And I'd like to thank the good people of Ward 5 for allowing me to be their representative on the City Council for the last eight years, and before that, representing that area on the County Board. And I'd like to thank my fellow Aldermen for being such good colleagues and working so hard to move our city forward. Thank Mayor Houston for the great job that you've done over the past four years, really turning our city around. It's been a tremendous achievement. Thank the late Mayor Dablin for, I really enjoyed working with him, as well as our acting mayor Frank Edwards. And I'd like to thank very much Jeanette Bland, who really runs the Council Coordinator's Office, for doing a fantastic job. I mean, she's like the right-hand person, woman of an Alderman. And also Joe Davis and Tim Griffin, who's been really helpful in helping me carry out my job, and the entire city staff, the directors, especially Director Mahoney, have really been helpful in, you know, in Alderman, we can't do this alone. It takes a lot of people to do our job, and without the help of all the great staff that we have in this city, not just carrying out our duties, but also answering questions and because, you know, nobody comes into this job knowing everything about city government. You have to learn, and the city staff has been great in helping me learn city government. And there's probably a lot more to learn, but I've certainly learned quite a bit in the last eight years. And I'd like to thank all those many people who've worked on, volunteered on, and contributed to my campaigns throughout the years. There's no way I could have ever been elected without their help. Now, we've achieved a lot in the last eight years, but there's a lot more left to do. And I, my sincere good wishes to the new council and to Mayor Lachlan Felder on achieving great, great things for our city. And I'll be rooting for you on the sidelines.
Next, we have Alderman Dove. Alderman Dove also assisted Acting Mayor Edwards on a temporary basis four years ago when he stepped in to help move the city forward during a very, very traumatic period, and has done a good job in terms of representing the people of Ward 9 as well as the people of the City of Springfield.
As everyone knows, I'm not one for long speeches or for saying much, unless it really means something to my heart.
Thank you.
Bruce, so I won't make this long, but, you know, I appreciate, obviously, having the opportunity to serve Springfield, and was definitely honored to serve Ward 9 for eight years. I think it goes on, you know, without being said, that couldn't have been done without the help of everyone around, not only my Aldermen, but the mayors that I've served under and served with, and obviously the city officials. Especially like to thank my kids and my wife who made it tonight. Thank you, guys, and for bearing with me in eight years. Now, I had two of you then, now I have three. And it's been quite the trip, I can say, but as my favorite band would say, what a long, strange trip it's been. But it's been interesting, I appreciate it, and thank you again for everything.
Next, we have the former Alderman of Ward 10, who chose to serve city government in a different capacity as the City Council Coordinator, has really done an outstanding job in a very short period of time because he understands what the Aldermen need. And Tim Griffin, would you step forward?
Thank you for your almost eight years of service as an Alderman, but the job that you're doing today is really going to have much more impact on the future of the City of Springfield than your period of time as an Alderman you've done outstanding.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mayor. I'm gonna go ahead and go out and make sure I'm the only guy that talks less than Steve Dove. So again, I do want to thank the men and women that I've got to serve with, both administrations, people that work within those administrations, and all the men and all the women that I've served with that helped work together to get things done. Knowing that there's a couple people from Ward 10 going out, I just want to make sure that everyone does know this is the only way we can make sure we spend more money on Ward 10 tonight than any other ward.
And next, we have Alderman McDonough, who stepped in to fill Alderman Griffin's shoes during a relatively short period of time. And any time you're stepping in during a short period of time, it really is a very, very difficult situation. He really has immersed himself, has done a great job of representing the people of Ward 10 as well as the entire City of Springfield. And Jim, would you come forward?
I'm surprised mine is the same size as the other guy's. They're much smaller. Mayor, thank you very much. I want to thank the people of the City of Springfield for allowing me to serve in a capacity for a short period of time, but I also want to thank the mayor, who was the one that nominated me with the City Council. And it was, I have found it to be a tremendous honor to serve, and I am very, very proud of my city and the folks that I've met through this process. I also want to thank the members of the City Council. I have, in a very short period of time, I had to get to know a lot of folks in ways that I'd never known before, and I want to thank all, and I mean all, Joe, all of the members of the City Council, my friends, my friends. I thank you so much. I also want to mention Tim Griffin and the help he has been in, as the mayor mentioned, he's in a very, he is now serving in a very important part of our community, not the least of which is for the purpose of making sure that the new members, and there's gonna be six of them, this is a huge turnover in a city council. This is very, very important. But Tim has been tremendous in that regard, and Jeanette Bland is a goddess. Thank you, Jeanette, for all you've done. She's my favorite. And if it weren't for Tim and Jeanette and the mayor and his staff, and all of the many, many people from the city, from our city government, we have some of the best people in any municipality in Illinois, and I've been around a lot of them. So I think we all ought to be proud, and I want to thank you again very much for letting me serve in this capacity, Mr. Mayor.
And we have a proclamation that I would like to read, that we had someone who has had a significant accomplishment here recently. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas Springfield, Illinois is a sports city with numerous and varied individual and team sports for children and adults. And whereas the City of Springfield is blessed to be home to the 2011 Southeast High School graduate Alex Harden, a talented student athlete who succeeded in studies as well as on the high school basketball court. And whereas Harden always dreamed about..." and whereas Harden always dreamed about playing professional basketball; whereas Harden was the 18th overall selection in the 2015 WNBA draft, picked by defending champion Phoenix Mercury; and whereas the 5'11" guard forward Harden plans to compete vigorously for the team. Now therefore, I, J. Michael Houston, Mayor of the city of Springfield, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May 6, 2015, to be Alex Harden Day in the city of Springfield in honor of her commitment to winning and for emphasizing values such as self-discipline, self-confidence, and a spirit of selfless service for the betterment of the community." And I think we have members of her family that are here to accept this.
And her coach.
And her coach.
On behalf of Alexandria Harden and the Harden family, Mayor Houston, we thank you and the City Council for this proclamation. She told me that, and I want to express this from us all, that she didn't get here by herself. She didn't make it on her own with her family, just her. It was the community and everyone. She wanted me to thank everyone who supported her along the way, all along the way, with special thanks to her coaches at the YMCA, where she got her start in basketball, the gym, our elementary school, Franklin Middle School, Southeast High School, and the coaching staff, oh, the Illinois Crush AAU basketball team, and the Wichita State Shockers coaching staff. Thank you very much.
Of course, there's one more deserving plaque to give to Mayor Mike Houston. So, while he makes his way down here, we had the State of the City last week, and, you know, I thought I got to know the Mayor, first knew him in 1979, but he corrected me, that's the bad news. He said, "Actually, you grew up across the street from me." So, the good news for that is evidently I never hit a ball in his yard or never got chased away because it wasn't that memorable to me, so that's good news. But since '79, I watched him, you know, under the old commission form of government, he was the Mayor, of course, and did that with two terms, and then serving as a third term now, was in charge of a lot of projects, moving the city forward with, you know, good intentions and put his heart and soul into the city and moving us forward with great gratitude. We really appreciate it. But the most gratifying project evidently was one of my greatest mentors, my dad, he brought him up, I brought up just this week, and we had lunch together, and he said, "You know, what was really good was the consolidated garages." He said, "I always wanted to do that, but I was never able to get it done, and that's something you did in four years, and that shows you that you can bring competing groups together, and if you have a common goal, you can accomplish much, even with bureaucracy of government." So, we salute you for all you've done for the city of Springfield, and, of course, what we have is a plaque, and all of them read the same, it's to J. Michael Houston, except for the name, of course, and title. J. Michael Houston, City of Springfield, Illinois, April 29, 2011 to May 7, 2015. As a saying by Rachel Lindsay, "We must have many Lincoln-hearted men. A city is not built in a day, and they must do their work and come and go while countless generations pass away." And we really appreciate the job Mayor Houston has done to move this city forward. So, thank you very much.
Well, I see my wife Carolyn back here, who is supposed to be on her way to St. Louis at the moment to babysit tomorrow, and I saw my granddaughter a few moments ago, and for anybody that went online on the Journal Register today, they had some pictures. And the only difference is she's seven now, where she was three then, so she's a much bigger young lady than she was, and my daughter Elizabeth, and I was really surprised when I looked out there and saw them a few moments ago. All I can say is thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of Springfield. I've certainly enjoyed it. Thank you. And actually, Mayor, we'd like to have you there.
Families may leave the room now.
And would Director McCarty like to give us a presentation?
Mayor, if I may, while he's working his way up here, I'd like to officially welcome Bill McCarty to the big boy's table since he turned 40 today.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate that. Is that TV not working?
I have no idea.
We got these others on, we can start. Well, that was a very tough act to follow, so looking forward to giving this final presentation. Tonight's presentation will be a wrap-up that I traditionally do about this time for the previous fiscal year. So, this will be a wrap-up for fiscal year 2015 that ended on February 28 of 2015. Overall, we had a very good year. From a revenue standpoint, we didn't overperform a whole lot, but we didn't underperform a whole lot. That is predicated on something I'll talk about with regards to pilot here in a couple of slides, but as of right now, as it stands today, things turned out pretty well and about as expected from a revenue standpoint. Taxes of the local economy, which is our single biggest revenue source, that includes sales taxes, property taxes, telecom tax, all performed about as expected with slight overperformance of about $422,000. Our share of statewide taxes were about as expected with a slight overperformance. Pilot was a slight underperformance of about $456,000. Now, bear in mind, that does take into account the waiver of $1.78 million from January and February pilot payments of this year. So, even with that waiver, we were pretty close to what was originally budgeted. Now, certainly, moving forward, there's an ordinance up for council discussion. Should the council take action on that, that certainly will change this number overall. But as it is today, that is where we are, inclusive of the waiver. Other revenue sources slightly underperformed by about $400,000. Most of that attributable to two items, the loss of the school resource officer, revenue from the District 186, and also the fact that we budgeted some fire trucks to sell at a certain number and those sales fell short of that number. But overall, our total revenue underperformed budget by only $365,000, which is less than a half a percent. So, we would consider that to be a neutral concern. Expense, on the other hand, overperformed very well. Fiscal discipline has been a hallmark of Mayor Houston's term. He has instilled that philosophy from day one, and certainly in fiscal year 2015, it was no different. We overperformed, that is, spent less than budgeted in every major category. $1.4 million in personal services, $3 million in other operating lines, that includes contractual, commodities, equipment, et cetera, and $200,000 in budgeted transfers were not made, for a total overperformance of $4.6 million. So, at the end of the day, what does this mean? As it stands today, inclusive of the pilot waiver in January and February, we're looking at a surplus of about $1.6 million in revenue versus expenses, pre-audited estimate for fiscal year 2015. If we had not waived the pilot payment, that would be a $3.5 million surplus, which is in line with the multimillion dollar surpluses produced in previous fiscal years. Now, let's take a look at those three key performance indicators that we've talked about over the years. In fiscal year 10, our end-of-year cash position was nearly a negative $10 million. That is, the cash in the bank on the last day of the fiscal year. Four years ago, at the end of 2011, just prior to Mayor Houston taking office, it was negative 2.6. At the end of the most recent fiscal year, it's $5.6 million positive, a $2.1 million increase versus last year, and an $8.2 million increase in four years. Average daily cash balance, which is a good measure of our liquidity. Four years ago, the city was doing passive borrowing. Now, I've spoken about that before, but just to refresh your memory, passive borrowing is when you have several funds sharing the same bank account and you are, in essence, borrowing from the other funds in the bank account in order to meet your obligations, payroll, contractual obligations, et cetera. For the last two or three years, we've had to do none of that as our liquidity has improved. We went from negative $3.5 million average daily cash balance four years ago to, the most recent fiscal year, a $9 million positive average daily cash balance, a $1.1 million increase versus last year, and a $12.5 million increase over the last four years. Fund balance, fund balance or reserves, we've talked about that quite often. In 2010, our fund balance was down to 2.3%. Our internal target is 15%. So, at that level, obviously, there is a lot of concern. It started to improve over the subsequent years. Four years ago, it was 8.1%. This most recent fiscal year, and I need to explain this line, the blue and the yellow combined is where we are at, inclusive of the waiver that occurred. $20.7 million, or 18.3%, which is higher than it's ever been in the city of Springfield. We have never finished over $20 million before, and we've never had more than an 18% fund balance. The red on top would have been inclusive of, had the pilot payments not been waived in January and February, that would have brought us up to $22.5 million or nearly 20% fund balance. Now, remember, our internal target is 15%, so we're extremely pleased with how things have turned out over the last four years. The increase is $1.7 million versus last year and about $12.3 million versus four years ago. Again, I referenced this already, this is the history going back to fiscal year 90. Again, the yellow, the black line is fund balance level in terms of percentage, and once again, you see that we have the highest percentage that we've had in that time period. There are a couple of scenarios on here, one is, and these are the last three, one is the no pilot, meaning if the entirety of the remaining $6.3 million is diverted or refunded, that's where we would end up. I believe it's around 12% maybe, 12.3%? 12.8%. The middle one is where we currently are, at 18.3, and then the nearly 20%, you can see, I referenced that on the previous page, have we not been in a position to waive the January and February payments. As I traditionally do, looking ahead at some of the concerns that we have out there, I've referenced this before, we continue to see stagnation in terms of property and telecom taxes, and that's very disconcerting, given the fact that those particular taxes, fund specific things, that being police and fire pensions and property taxes, and the library for telecom taxes. Corporate allocations to Oak Ridge and the library, non telecom, are expected to continue and will grow. Our expenses are going up in those entities. Our revenues are not following suit at nearly the same levels and the same trends. So, we will undoubtedly continue to have to subsidize those entities, and those subsidies could grow, which means you will be drawing resources away from other areas such as public works, police, or fire. Healthcare pension costs continue to be a major cost driver in the city of Springfield. While our major expense in terms of personal services has leveled off over the last three years or so, thanks to some negotiating and contractual terms that have been entered into with the city between us and the collective bargaining units, unfortunately, the same cannot be said for pension costs and for healthcare costs. We talked about this at Budget Time. The corporate fund had an increase of about $1.2 million this year in healthcare costs. The overall, for all funds, was nearly $2.7 million. That is something certainly the city will need to monitor and certainly will need to work on mitigating sooner rather than later. Pensions, pensions continue to grow as a percentage of property taxes, and then, I'm speaking of police and fire pensions specifically. In 2000, pensions took or consumed 32% of property taxes in the city of Springfield. In '05, 46%. In '10, 85%. And in '15, 88%. So, as you see, pensions continue to grow, and with a stagnating property tax level, that is something that the city will need to watch and will need to be concerned about and probably will need to begin thinking about, because if those trends continue, police and fire pensions will overtake the entirety of the property taxes that are brought in in the city of Springfield. As such, talking about stagnating revenues or relatively flat revenues with ever-growing expenses, I urge the new administration and the new council to continue to rely on creative management, process improvement, and fiscal discipline. Now is not the time to do anything too differently because the city simply is not in a position to afford it. And the other thing to begin thinking about is that we're in the middle of a three-year infrastructure program. I think everybody in this room can agree that it is worthwhile to invest in the city, to invest in our streets, invest in our sidewalks, and we have one more year of the three-year program implemented by Mayor Houston. It's probably not too early to begin thinking about funding infrastructure when that program And finally, in summary, once again, 2015 was a continuation of the success from years past, thanks to the, well, in part, or actually in entirety, due to Mayor Houston's philosophy of fiscal discipline and tight expenditure control. Our KPIs are all up, every one of them. Average daily cash balance has increased dramatically, as has the end-of-year cash balance, as has our fund balance. Revenue growth continues to be a concern. We've talked about it before, that has not changed. And a variety of expense pressures continues to persist and will only continue to grow. They must be addressed. Any questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you. Chair Warren, take a motion, dispense with the reading of the minutes, the April 21, 2015, City Council meeting, approve the minutes.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The Chair want to take a motion to incorporate pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair want to take a motion to incorporate pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The Chair want to take a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Lescow has been disconnected from the voting machine for some reason.
Yet another thing turned off early.
Motion passes 9-0. Agenda is number 2014-085, 2015-051, 2015-089, 2015-116, 2015-121, 2015-156 remain tabled or in committee. Is there anyone that would like to bring the Villas of Downtown Springfield, which is Agenda number 2015-156, out of committee? One thing we do need to keep in mind with that particular ordinance is that they need to have completion on that by September, August of 2016, to be able to house the students in there, so that they are operating on a fairly tight timeframe. And if they don't meet that timeframe, then they would be really running another year behind if they were to move ahead with that project, because it's not a project where you can come in and simply put it in in the middle of the school year, because they have to be able to have those units rented and up and going. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I do know that Alderman-elect Proctor has been working on it, and I believe we'll have healthy discussion next Tuesday.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is, yes?
On the ordinances and resolutions tabled or remaining in committee, I'd ask that 2014-085 be removed from the agenda.
Okay. 2014-085.
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn.
He's withdrawn.
Oh, okay. We don't need to do anything like that. Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is number 2015-152, an ordinance amending Chapter 90, Section 90.18 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances, as amended pertaining to restrictions on the eligibility to obtain a license to sell alcoholic liquor at retail. Chair wants to take a motion to place Agenda number 2015-152 on final passage.
It's been moved and seconded for passage, discussion? Yes, please. I would just like to publicly state that no matter who it was of the two possible candidates for elected office who ran for Alderman that had won in this particular case, I would support this ordinance no matter what. I don't think that this should be something to preclude someone from serving on the City Council. This is not a political decision, it is not a party decision. This is something to match the state law, this is something that we should be doing, and I agree completely with what Alderman Edwards said last Tuesday.
And just for clarification for anyone that does not know exactly what this deals with, up until a few years ago, there was both a state law and city ordinances that prevented an Alderman from holding a liquor license. There is still that provision for a mayor cannot hold a liquor license. And so, the state changed it so Alderman could in fact have a liquor license and serve as an Alderman, but they couldn't vote on anything dealing with liquor enforcement. This simply will change the city code to match the state code. Further discussion?
Mayor, I agree with Alderman Thailand and what Alderman Edwards said last week. I did some research on the state law. The state law actually changed about 10 years ago, January 1, 2006, and that was because a suburban Chicago Alderman had been elected, a person had been elected Alderman who had a liquor license. And I guess the only reason it never got to, we never got around to changing our code is because since that time, apparently, we've never had anyone elected to the council who had a liquor license. So it was going to come up eventually at some point, you know, if not this year, some other year, when somebody who had a liquor license got elected, and, you know, I think they should, if the voters of their ward want to send them to the council, that they should be here, so I'm going to support this ordinance.
Further discussion? There are no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes nine zero. The next item on the agenda is number 2015-164, an ordinance authorizing the waiver and refund of payment in lieu of taxes from the Office of Public Utilities, an amount required to establish net revenue for fiscal year 2015, in an amount of 125 percent of the current debt service requirement for the Office of Public Utilities. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2015-164 on final passage. It's been moved and seconded, discussion. One of the things that, you know, as we deal with this, this is certainly something that we need to look at. Right now, we do not know what the final numbers are going to be. My personal recommendation would be that this should remain in committee until we have those numbers, and the plan as to how we are going to correct this situation. And, you know, this is something that we need to do, we certainly have the dollars to do it, but I think that there really needs to be accountability in terms of the actual dollars that are being spent, as opposed to just simply saying we are going to cover whatever that dollar amount is. Alderman Edwards?
I agree with you, Mayor, on that deal. I just want to make sure we're not putting the utility at jeopardy. Maybe Eric can come up and address it. We have guidelines, we have timetables that we have to meet, and we want to make sure that this doesn't do anything to put them in jeopardy, but I do agree with what you're saying, that we're throwing something out here. We don't know what the numbers are, because we're trying to help the utility in technical default. If that doesn't do that, I'll withdraw my motion.
Yeah, I mean, the auditors are still working right now. I think the major line items are done. We're at about 2.8. We don't expect any significant adjustments, but if the auditors find something they want moved, it could move a little bit more one way or the other. You know, timing-wise, the concern is, the auditors, we've asked them to have a report to us by June 1st. If we don't have this, they will report we're in default, and that will trigger a ratings review and subsequent downgrade. So that's, as we related, that's how it sets.
And that's only three weeks from now, four weeks from now. I mean, we don't want to play with fire here. I get that, but I do understand, and maybe, I think Alderman Cameron was talking about putting a cap to help offset that.
But the cap doesn't necessarily do you any good if you don't hit the right number.
Well, that's my question, because I don't want to play with fire here. We have to get this right. Our number has to be right. And now we're leaning on you to say, okay, do we withdraw the motion? Do we go with the motion? We've got to be safe, and we've got to do this right.
Before we brought this even concept out, we verified with the auditors that we checked, said, would you even count this if we did it afterwards? And the answer was yes. But they're doing their audit now, and they're going to wrap it up, and whatever's wrapped up, if there's nothing there, we will be in default, we'll have to declare it in the bond markets, which will immediately trigger a review. And the question is, the only question I have is how far down will the electric fund rating go?
Here's what we'll do. I'll go ahead and leave the motion on the floor. I think it's an important vote, and I'm trusting the next City Council to be the watchdogs and do what we need to do, but, you know, I was always questioning about my votes with the utility on technical default. We can't afford another downgrade, I get that, but we can't afford to keep coming back to the city, give us more money, give us more money. So hopefully, the Alderman will support this motion, and we'll move it forward, and you'll be able to sit there, and I'm trusting that, and you have before, we'll do the right thing with the citizens' money.
Mayor? Alderman Cameron?
Mr. Hobbie, you said the auditors, we asked for the audit to be finished by June 1st, which is, you know, less than a month away. Is it possible that the auditors could finish with their audit within two weeks by the time of the next City Council meeting, or before the next City Council meeting?
They're working, I mean, they're working as diligently as they can, so I, yeah, I mean, they're going to be done when they're done. So, you know, if they're done in two weeks, then they'll be preparing a report to give to us.
So if we put this off, put it, send it back to committee, then there's a possibility that before the next council meeting, we, the auditors could be finished, find us in technical default, and then, you know, and then really this, we're passing this later or after that will not do the city or CWLP any good. Is that accurate statement?
We're getting into a lot of what-if scenarios, but yeah, if they get done early and we haven't done anything, I don't think the auditors would have any choice other than to find us in default, because without this, as the city code sets today, we have to make the pilot payment, and therefore, we will not make coverage.
What, as we sit here today, what is your, how much would we have to refund pilot money to CWLP to reach the 125 percent ratio?
As of today, it would be about $2.8 million.
So if we put a cap of $4 million, that would certainly be well above that.
I think that would give us enough headroom, yes.
We do go into two, now, CWLP is in the process of refinancing about $450 million of bonds, correct?
That is correct.
And if we go into tech, and the idea behind that is, take advantage of lower interest rates, and we would save, we could save up to $2 to $3 million on the $42 million a year we're paying in interest payments, but, which could result in about a $66 million savings over the 22 years left, the life of the bonds, but we go into technical default, we're not going to have any savings from a lower interest rate. Is that correct?
Yeah, it starts getting pretty complicated. If we go into default, trying to refund the bonds becomes very difficult to, impossible, because we will, there's an additional bonds test, because we're going to issue new bonds, and because then we won't have made coverage this year, we will mandate the next City Council a rate increase, and we're going to be downgraded, say, time, which will jeopardize interest savings. And again, I don't know how far down we'll go. If we don't have a default, there's no automatic ratings review, there's an opportunity to do some things with rates to have a positive picture. I don't know what the rating agencies will do, I'm not going to try to predict that, but it will take action, but there will be no automatic review until we go for the refunding. There are some things we're doing right now, missile capacity auction, coal contracts, the $2 to $3 million savings in interest, there's a lot of things that can make our financials look very good as we go forward. We could have a positive story to say, you know, and if we look at some pilot restructuring, because, you know, the pilots, let's face it, the pilots restructured a lot over the last 10 years. We've transferred, I think in the last five years, an additional $8 million from CWLP Electric to the corporate fund through the adjusted pilot from 3.5 percent to 30 percent of net. There's been other additionals, I mean, we no longer can collect back for what was standard public work services, streetlights, traffic lights, the energy provided those, billing for ISD services, those are another $5 to $7 million a year. So, understand, we're not standing here asking for money just for no reason. This is, there's been a decline in revenue for the last five years inside the city of Springfield. In the meantime, our expenses got up, and our transfers out to the corporate fund via pilot and other things has also gone up. So it's, as I've said before, it's been a perfect storm of events that get us here. We don't stand here asking for a lot of extra. As everybody knows, this is not going to be my problem, you know, directly. I will not be chief utility engineer in two weeks. I will be a rate payer, and I'm very concerned about CWLP, and if we allow this default to occur, you have put the electric division at historically dangerous positions. I'm not saying it's all fixed if we do this ordinance, there's still going to have to be significant actions by the leaders of the city of Springfield. But my analogy is this, you've got a great big boat, somebody fell over, they're going to drown. You can throw them a life preserver and get a plan to get them out of the water, or you can just let them drown. That's where we're at today. We can throw a life raft out there, life preserver to the electric fund, and hope people, the next step, make the right plans to get us out. If we don't, it's going to drown. And Eric, basically, if we pass this ordinance, basically what we're doing is we're taking $2 to $3 million that's currently in reserves in the corporate fund, and we're just taking that and placing it into the CWLP fund. Is that correct?
Basically, it's an expense that the electric division incurred in the transfer to the corporate fund, and it's just refunding that expense. It's basically no different than if you returned, you know, some item and got the credit back for returning.
I just think it's too risky to put this off for two weeks and risk, even though maybe the chances aren't great that the audit will be finished within two weeks. I don't see why we should take that chance and put the utility at risk where we're not going to be able to get the financial advantage that we would otherwise be able to get from refinancing these bonds and save up to, you know, $66 million over the next 22 years, $2 to $3 million a year, and it certainly is going to keep rates lower if we can cut that interest rate.
That refunding is $2 to $3 million a year in interest that flows outside the city of Springfield. That's immediately money that will stay inside the city if we are allowed to refund.
Exactly. So I'm going to, so as far as the motion to keep it in committee, I think I would urge a no vote on that.
There is no motion.
If you thought you made the motion.
The motion on the floor is to vote for the refund.
Yeah. If we talk about the audit for a second, my understanding is, the audits, the auditors do not have to finalize numbers to the end of June. And when we say they finalize numbers at the end of June, then they start moving forward with the actual audit, so I think we may have a little bit of time here. The second thing is, that as we look at this, there will probably be a downgrade regardless of what we do. What the rating agencies look for is what is the solution to the problem? And so that, just putting a Band-Aid on something is not going to solve this problem. And in my opinion, what we need to do is to be developing the plan to actually solve this problem, so that we can be in a much better position when we go to get the ratings to be able to minimize whatever damages is going to be done.
Well, Mayor, I think, you know, putting a Band-Aid on it doesn't solve the problem, that's true, but it does stop the bleeding. I think that's what we have to do now, and then a longer-term solution should be worked on by the next council. And so I think we should stay the course and pass this ordinance, and we could put a cap on it of $4 million if we want to, I would support that if somebody made that motion, but I think we should pass this either with or without the cap.
Further discussion?
Mayor Houston?
Yes.
You're advising us to wait to make this decision in two weeks. Instead of making this decision May 5th, you're--
By sending it back to committee, you just pull it out the next committee meeting? You can have discussion about this at the committee, the whole, you can get a better chance to know exactly what the numbers are that you're talking about.
So you're recommending that we delay the decision until May 19, and that during that period of time, there may be some additional information that would be helpful to us in making the decision?
I would think that there would be.
Thank you, Mayor.
Further discussion? There are no further discussion. We have a motion on the floor, and those in favor vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open.
Motion to pass.
Motion to pass.
Yes, Alderman Lesko?
Okay, motion passes seven two. Is there any unfinished business to come before the City Council? Is there any new business to come before the City Council?
Yes, please. Director Mahoney?
Please be right back.
Okay. Then I guess if I may add something, I'll wait my turn.
We did have one person sign up to speak tonight, Keith Mohammed.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to just approach the microphone? If you'd state your name and address for the record.
My name is Keith Mohammed. I'm a citizen of Springfield, Illinois, 1206 East Lower Street, Ward 2, Mr. Simpson. I'm the local chairman of New Black Panther Party, and I come here to address you, Mayor Honored Mike Houston, and all the council members. I've traveled the nation and seen what's going on across the nation, from Ferguson to Muskegee, and what's not going on in Baltimore. And my concerns weigh heavily for our community of Springfield, the black community at hand. And when I sit on my front porch, I watch as blacks and whites hold hands going up and down the street. My concerns about my family, and as well as your families, of what can happen in Springfield due to the crime that's going on right now. And I think at times, it becomes inevitable what's going around, because of concerns of what we don't have and what needs to be given. And I feel that we can help each other, if I can help you, and you can help me, because I'm involved with the community daily, from dealing with programs-- I'm involved with the community daily, from dealing with programs, from dealing with the youth, talking to the youth, and understanding what's going on within our community. And one thing we do need, they have idle minds, and the summertime is coming, they're going to have more idle minds than nothing to do. And what these young men need is jobs and something to do. Parking, recreations, give jobs, beautification jobs, to help clean up what's going on in our community. And I know that the New Black Panther Party gets bad rep on the media and more, but not this time. It's a different day in Springfield. And I'm asking you to help me, to help out our community by helping these young men and women to do better than what they're doing. Also, another thing, in my community, the lights need to come up. We need more lights. There's too many people being shot and killed in my community, in our community. We need the streets fixed. Too many cars are being run down over potholes in our community. When I look at outside of Springfield, around up and down North Grand, around the beautification system, the east side needs to be beautified too. And what better thing to do to put the young people to work to clean up so they can appreciate their own community? You know, so I'm just asking the Honorable Mike Houston and City Council, that I would like to work with people to make it better inside the urban community before what happens that happened in Baltimore, Ferguson, Muskegee, and anywhere else, so it will not happen in Springfield. Do these young men shoot each other like crazy? We're not savages, they're not savages. They have idle minds, they need something to do. And I'm asking the City Council to help us help them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed.
Mark, I forwarded you an email that I received from a constituent, and since I received this email, I've received two additional contacts, a phone call, and a, an email that are similar in nature. The email that I forwarded you came from April 29 in the morning. What happened was, is a gentleman was driving in an area that had construction being done. I don't know whether it was city employees or whether it was contractors in this particular case. The man was following the direction of the person directing traffic, having them go slow, and one of the workers nearly walked right into the middle of the street. He slammed on his brakes. The worker then proceeded to do some hand gestures and drop some F-bombs aimed at this gentleman's car with his daughter and his son in them, who he was taking to school. He felt that it was unprofessional by anyone representing the city, whether it was a contractor or an employee. I have since been told that there have been issues, similar issues, with the way that Nelson's has responded to some people when they've gone out to find out what was going on, why they were cutting the trees, the way they were cutting them. And I've also heard from another constituent that, and once again, this could be a contractor, it could be a city employee, I don't know which, where another person was throwing vulgarities out when something didn't go their way and people were trying to drive through an area where there was construction going on. I'm not judging, I'm just asking that you please look into it. Please remind these people that they are supposed to be professional. Alderman, those, you described more to those situations. I'd be glad to talk to you later about the specific ones that you brought up.
Very well. If there's no other business to come before the council, I'd accept the motion for adjournment. It's moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Thank you.